Hi everybody, this is a poker coaching study session. We're gonna study some cash hands where we can see everyone's cards because we are super users and we cheat, which allows us to win all the time. Unfortunately, we cheat 24 hours later, which makes it a little harder. But let's see what happens. So this is one-two no limit on ignition. And now that we know that it's one-two, let's go back to big blinds because that's how we think. Actually, we'll leave it up at this because the dollars and big blinds are exactly the same here. Let's do that.
That's two dollar.
There we go.
Two dollars as well?
No, you're right.
You're gonna make me do math today.
No, we're not doing that. I'm not gonna make you divide by two. I apologize. What was I thinking? Divide by two. But instead, you could multiply by five and move the decimal point over if that's easier for you. Alright.
I know.
Should raise, should raise and take it. Let's see that, watch that happen. And his raise size is 2.5 and that is, we'll see if that stays his standard or if he varies his bet size. There we go, first hand. Next hand in order. 10 queens should open, ace six should not fold and king eight should. Let's see what happens.
Jack ten can also open.
Yeah, Jack ten can and the queen ten fold there is too tight. Something's going on at this table, we don't know. Let's just take a quick look at what those ranges are supposed to look like in the wizard. The under the gun raise.
Hijack.
Has, doesn't like Jack ten.
He's on the hijack.
Oh, the Jack ten's on the hijack. Thank you.
Hey.
He still doesn't like Jack ten, but the cutoff loves queen ten. I mean, this is, this is mandatory. .04. .04 is a lot. That's four big blinds per hundred playing this hand. And given that I win less than four big blinds per hundred, I should play this hand. Alright, but given that it folds around to me and the ace six suited, I should just raise and my raise is gonna be 2.5. And king eight offsuit should just fold here, right? Yeah, he's.
Yeah, I think it's really cusp.
King nine, I think. We'll take a look. Remember that. Alright. Little raise from the button.
I know that I fold myself.
Kings, yeah, king nine. Little bit, little sliver of king eight three betting, which by the way.
I had three betting, of course.
Was gonna work. Alright, there we go. Next hand, nothing's happening. Interesting. Ace ten should open and it's me and I will. King ten suited should absolutely defend. And I think.
Good three bet.
Can do three bets and probably mixed three betting and folding. If he calls, the queen four suited, multi-way like that. Don't know. We'll get your opinion in a second, but let's see what he does. There's my raise. King ten does a tiny three bet. That's gonna accomplish very little, so obviously he disrespects me tremendously, thinking that he wants to keep me in. He doesn't want to get a fold.
Ah, mincy bet.
Yeah, mincy bet. This mincy bet accomplishes nothing unless you, what it accomplishes is you get head up, heads up against me and I'm the weakest player at the table. Which granted, I might be, but they shouldn't know that yet. I've only been here for two hands.
So I got a question about this small sizing. So I've been seeing this a lot and I can't say, I can't decide if it's a strategy in which to it's, it's either a bad strategy or it's a strategy in which people have a very good hand. A super premium and they don't want to generate folds. What do you guys think?
I think it's more the other way around. They have a bad hand. Or a superficial hand that they, maybe is a three bet, but they don't like it to three bet and then they three bet small. And if you don't raise, don't four bet, yeah, then they go.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I can see that. Another thing is that they just want to be the, they want to be the aggressor.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll see, we'll see how well that works for him. I think it might work well for him this hand, unfortunately.
I see people doing that.
If he did call, that queen four is nowhere near in range for the big blind. I was, I was a crazy person to even think about it. I was back in, I was back in tournament land to think about it. And a little note here. Look at the big blinds calling range. To just the under the gun raise, now add in the button call and look at how much tighter this calling range gets. Right now, we're calling, we're calling 18% of hands.
Okay.
Blind. We're defending eight and we're defending more than that. We're defending, we're folding 75%. I'll call it that way. Folding 75%. Now throw in a call from the button, giving us much better pot odds, especially for those suited hands. And what do we do? We fold 81% now. And look at all the hands disappear. Yeah, so pot odds are not thing pre-flop.
It's also interesting how much those suited connectors go up in value. Not in value, but they're, how much they're called. Because we're closing, we're closing the action, so we can't be thrown off the cards.
Yeah.
And you know, as we've seen in your previous sessions, these have pretty good odds multi-way. And also they have really good implied odds, right?
Right. But notice, you're talking the suited connectors here, whereas in the other case, we're playing all the suited gappers down to five. At 100% frequency and dropping in some suited double gappers here. And then all you do is throw in, add in the button, one call on the button and disappears. All the double gappers disappear basically.
Not the lowest ones.
Yeah, yeah. No, the, the double gappers, not the single gappers, meaning the, your 10, 7, 9, 6 that were in there are gone. And now you're.
Yeah, but that's the middle part of the range is gone because that's how you call it. We first implied odds because they dominated too much.
Yeah. But down here, down here in the 7, 5, 6, 4, 5, 3 range, you tend not to be dominated. You just are beaten.
Yeah.
Beaten is not bad. Being dominated is bad. Unless you're into S and M, in which case they're both the same thing. Alright, here we go. So, and he plays it right. And now let's watch me. There's no way I should be three betting this. And even if ace ten is a fold to this raise normally, it can't be to this size. I would not supr, I think ace ten here probably folds some to a real three bet.
The best anti you have.
It does fold to a three bet.
Yeah. Folds to the three bet, but I can't fold to this size, can I?
I would.
No.
I don't think I'd fold to this size. It's just, this hand has really shitty reverse implied odds.
Yeah.
But I don't, I think when you're drawing to the straight and your pot odds are 17%.
Yeah.
I don't think you can fold.
Yeah, but you're out of position. Sorry, you have less odds.
Alright.
You're right. I mean, it's, it's a less than ideal situation, but I think the pot odds demand a call. I mean, so anytime you enter a pot. Except if villain has aces or kings, you usually have 30% equity or more.
Yeah. And if you have an ace in your hand, you have 25% equity against every hand except ace ace.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
You know, there you go. However, realizing it out of position is gonna be tough and reversing pot odds because.
You also have a lot of reversed implied odds.
Exactly. Exactly. Because when he has jack, jack, your ace is good, but your 10 isn't. And when he has ace.
Oh, he has ace queen and an ace comes.
Yeah. It's the opposite, exactly. But let's see how badly this works out for him. Please let this work out badly for him. Oh, he's also on a broken stack.
I just sold.
So screw that guy.
That's a good point. So if he's on a broken stack as well.
Yeah.
I think your hand goes up in value.
Much.
Because the reverse, the pot odds are less.
Exactly. Yeah. And his suitedness value goes down. He bets two thirds of the pot there. I am not folding. And I don't think I'm check raising. Nope. Here we go. Alright, it's over for you. He's not losing money. Yeah, he's not losing any more money though. Check. He checks behind and now.
Long bet.
Yeah, I'm, I think knowing me, I probably, I'm gonna bet to try to get some value from his ace king. Here in his pocket. And he's at 38. I don't know that I'm betting 38. I bet I'm gonna bet about 12, knowing me. Let's see. 16. Alright, a little bit better.
This addition fell a bit, but.
Yeah. And I don't know if this here is, I don't wanna go, I don't, unless you guys wanna look in the solver.
It's actually, it's being bad, I mean.
Yeah. First of all, how many of us wanna, wanna check, wanna check call to try to induce a second bluff here?
Um, check call. Well, I'm definitely influenced by the hand.
Yeah.
But I don't think I want to because I think that his, his hand is going to possess a lot of asex.
Mm-hmm.
So he did this stupid three bet. He did a small c bet and then check, check. So that line sounds like aces that he is gonna have on at some frequency. So yeah, I don't want to check. I wanna get value with my two pair, which, which obviously beat all those asex.
Right. The only hand, the, the only hand that makes sense for him to have that beats us with the way he played is aces. Because 10s should not be making that tiny bet. Aces, you know, you can see why someone would do it. And with this amount of blocking of aces with one combo and him only having 38 chips, let's go broke to aces. So what's the best order to go broke to aces? And I think it's probably a small blocker bet to induce, maybe better than a check?
Well, also a blocker has two good effects. One effect is that you're getting value from marginal hands. And the other one is that you can induce, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a blocker bet is called by jacks, queens and kings probably.
Yeah. And I think that, and the blocker size for here, somewhere between an insulting 2.3 big blinds and a normal six big blinds.
Problem is not enough, so.
Yeah.
Inducing this.
So with a hand this strong, which I really would wanna induce, I, I'd do like a B15 or B20.
Right. Okay. So like four big blinds. Yeah. Without putting my hand in front of that queen, that king 10, I think I like that better now in real life.
I could be influenced by his holding, but.
Yeah. Yeah. But I should have thought seriously about getting called by, I should have thought really seriously about getting called by kings here.
But do they really live enough against a blow, such a small bet?
Don't know, but do they, but remember that small bet also gets called.
Yeah.
King, queens, jacks and a 10. And I'd like that also. I'd like to get.
Also, I guess the purpose, one of the purposes, one of the reasons is that you wanna BSTI. If he has asex, if he has like ace queen or ace king, because let's not forget, he put in the retarded free bet.
What is BSTI?
Uh, bet's small to indi, to induce, right?
Yes. Yeah. We want a bestie. So yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking the, the induce is better here.
I never do that actually.
Having said all that, now, now I think it's worth looking at this one in the solver. We're gonna lose the three bet side. No, we can't look in the solver. The ace 10 folds. I gotta give myself ace 10 suited. And he doesn't, he does have this in range for that. Yeah, let's look at it. Let's.
In my playbook, they don't live enough, so.
Yeah.
Inducing it.
Okay.
I've certainly seen it to the, to the small bet. I've certainly seen people, you know, you bet small and they go, he, he's trying to buy.
I have seen it, but I don't think they do it enough.
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept that. You were saying skate?
No, I was saying, I just got here. What's up guys? When you guys talk about the bestie, it's usually on the river, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, not that you couldn't do it on another street, but.
Like all on the turn, eh?
That's what's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's solve this one quick. This, this one seems worth it.
Alright, why don't you guys move, move forward in life and I will set this up.
Thank you. You got it? You got the screenshot? Alright, here we go.
I do.
Next hand. Fold, 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 fold. I should raise and take it because I'm the best player at the table as of now. Beautiful. And the raises to three big blinds, not to 2.5, not based on the size, not based on the strength of the hand, but based on small blind. For me, it's gonna be three big blinds. And all the other positions are gonna be 2.5. That's a a lesson from GTO Wizard. And GTO Wizard also has another set where you're allowed to do just two big blinds from the earlier positions. And then it goes, I think, 2.3 and 2.5. So you can cha, you can change those sizings, but I don't bother with that. Maybe next year. Alright.
Did you wanna set this up for the, as a three bet pot so that we could?
Yeah, definitely. Definitely three bet. And we're gonna make my ace 10 suited, but, but irrelevant to the board.
Okay.
Okay. There we go. Next hand. Fold, fold, raise that king 10 from the cutoff. Fold, this king 10 has to fold and I have to defend with an ace three suited there against a cutoff raise. There's the raise and I have to defend. Let's make sure that that's all true and then we'll move on. Absolutely. Cut-off is gonna raise. There's just no doubt about that.
I think so.
Yep. And we're, we're, we're defending every suited ace here in the big blind.
Except the worst.
All of them.
Every suited.
And even two bet.
And some three betting. And if I were playing bet more confidently at this thing, I would have three bet this ace three because I wanna three bet the ace three 25% of the time. Ish. Let's see what the actual si, size it wants. It wants to raise. Strategy plus, let's just do strategy, not plus EQ. Strategy. There we go. Okay. I wanna be doing it 17% of the time, which means I wanna do it when I have spades and, and in the order, big, little. Which is this exact hand. So this hand should have three bet according to my, the way I do my randomization. But I just, I either didn't think of it in the moment fast enough. And I do that so we can, when we review the hand. Did something.
Yeah, that's one of the things that a lot of players are missing and these kinds of three bets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I miss also a lot.
Right.
Yeah.
But get, oh, go on, skate. Yeah.
No, I just wanna say there that, do you know the reason why it prefers like, because I never find these like the, the solver prefers the ace deuce, eight threes and then some fours, but the ace five.
Um, oh, I see what you mean. So, so it makes total sense why it's doing the low suited aces, but why is it doing two, three, four and not five?
It's not, not that it really prefers. It's only slight differences. So you can't tell almost the, the EV difference between that.
Yeah. But, but, but a shorter answer is this. If you forgot about your frequencies and just chose to raise ace four suited pure here, or ace three suited, or ace two suited, or even ace five, which it does rarely. If you made that choice, you wouldn't be that wrong. You'd be fine. This thing says you should do ace four, I mean, of these, I guess you should do it to the ace deuce. You should load it because it's the one that's the most, but the difference is.
Always remember that these solves are like 0.5% accurate.
Okay, they don't solve them all the way down.
Meaning that uh, yeah, you can, you can choose something like this. Very close to this, then you're still okay.
Yeah. Yeah. But it, you'll, you'll see, it doesn't hate having a five in your hand because it does it with a queen five. And then it loads it up here. So it's, it's getting some distribution across these low ones, skate.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I, I see, I see what you're saying. Like this is just to have like a, like a, like a blueprint of what your strategy can look like. But now I see what you're saying. You can simply, you can make your life better and simplify your strategy by merging, merging everything to like one or two.
I would go for, if you can find them somewhere, simplify ranges and don't look back.
Yeah. There's big blind versus, there's big blind versus a raise, 100 big blind, cash six max, 100 big blinds deep. Versus a raise. This is a three blind raise instead of a 2.5 big blind raise, but that's not the whole world. And we are up against the cutoff. And you look here, here it says do the ace five pure. So.
Yeah.
You know, but, but look at that, but you look, you see some, you see some of that similarity that the middle aces aren't, the low aces are. This goes down to ace queen where it likes it. And this one.
It's like, it's like sort of the same thing, just like it doesn't have like, that one doesn't have as much the queen trash and like suited.
Exactly. Alright, Larry. We are ready.
Thank you.
Alright, sure. Okay, so through the pot. We called. This hand looks like it's good enough for us to actually donk at a certain frequency. 25% of the time. By the way, I had a, so Phil Gaffond had a Ask Me Anything on Twitter. And I asked him about donking ranges from the, this does not pertain to three bet pots, but. So I was thinking about donking ranges in the big blind in SRP. And I'd been reading that ducking ranges, obviously we see duck ranges all the time with the solver, the big blind on a board like this actually. And I asked him if he thought it was worth the effort to learn them. If the return in EV was worth the effort. And he said, no.
Okay.
He said, actually, the, the uh, amount of effort you would need to put in to correctly play a donking strategy from the big blind in SRP isn't worth the return of EV. And our time is better spent studying other parts of the game tray. Cool. I like so any, anyway. Alright, here we go. So.
This is different.
Yeah, we're gonna check. Yeah, this is different. We're gonna check. What are the villain doing game and game that?
Yep.
Let's see if he shows.
Five was, I don't even remember his size. Let's. I'll go look it up.
His king 10 bet is, should be betting. Let's go back while we're looking it up. Let's go back and see.
I got it. He, he bet of the pot. Oh, he bet two thirds. He bet two thirds of the pot.
Okay, so he chose, he chose violence. So yeah, you could see, you've got, in solver world, you've got a significant range advantage.
Right.
And so that drives what we're seeing here.
I have all the tens almost as a suited bunch.
Which, which is the
The nine.
Yeah, you've got all this, you've got all the 10, nine and nines. You got more. Significantly. So you've got a range advantage and a nut advantage. So there's gonna be a dunking strat.
Right.
Okay, so.
He checks, I check. He bets large, which, which would bring my check raise frequency down a bit, even though this is a hand that could check raise.
Yeah, 75.
Yeah.
Let's see. Let's see where your check raises come from now. Do you still have healthy check raises? Which I assume is, it, I assume it's driven by your range and nut advantage.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, let's say that he bet D33. So instead of 16%, we are raising, we are raising a bigger size at a lower frequency.
Right. We, we, we check raise less often. When we do it, we do it to bigger size and we call.
Is it bigger or is the percentage bigger?
Uh, we, we're 16%. We, we had a 16% check raise frequency against the big size.
What I mean, they raised to 20 now. And what was the raise size?
Oh, right. It's a bigger.
It's a smaller proportion.
You're right. You're right.
Proportion. I don't know.
But you're right. But our raise was to 26.
The size is less.
Good, good point. Good point.
Yeah.
The raise.
Okay, so he bet B75.
Yep.
What are you supposed to do? We are supposed to mostly call?
Yeah, mostly call.
But we're sprinkling these check raises all through our, our range. I would assume it's all through our range.
Yep.
That's all through our range. So we call. Now, it's interesting because it goes check, check on ace of hearts. Now this card is better for the three betters. I don't think you're gonna get, yeah, you do get some dunks here. Get some dunks with your
Tens and nines.
Very top of range. So you, it's gonna spread, is it still spread across the entire range? It is mostly. Gets dunked, lost the very bottom of your range with some very poor draws. Um, so we check.
I wanna point out one thing on, on that turn. The other thing that happens is we bet most of our nines and sixes, meaning pocket nines and pocket sixes sets. On the, we check raise them on the flop because they unblock him from having a 10 and being able to continue. We don't bet a lot of our pocket 10s. We bet, we donk the pocket 10s on the turn. Because the ace comes in and fills up the rest of his range to be able to call now. Now he has more calls of our, because when we, when we have top set, we block him from having most of his continues. The ace comes, he's got a lot of continues.
Yeah.
That's why, that's my, why I think it's doing what it's doing for completely different reasons.
Yeah. So this is, so what's interesting here is that he is not supposed, this card is so good for him. He's not supposed to slow down with his 10. So if you look at uh, this will be secondary.
Cross two pair, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't love, we don't love his play. He's not. Kings and suited.
Yeah, he's supposed to, he's supposed to continue to barrel. Let's see if it actually, so here. Right here. And we go to equity versus equity. Yeah, you've got 51. Let's see if it shifts on this card. It does. So it's an equity shifting card. It's just really good for his three betting range.
Yeah.
Um, so check. And he checked, right? So he's, we're off the solve.
Right.
Now the question becomes, the big question is, on that, when the four of clubs is total brick comes.
Yeah.
What do you do?
And what size?
Or you check.
So yeah. So you do not have a donker size really here. You shove? Or you check?
Shove an 86. I have some oh, no, oh, let's, yeah, no, click on the, click on my ace 10 there.
They do 86.
I think there's no.
You do get the, this is the part of the branch that has 86.
Alright, so I.
Let's see what your equity is.
And I 75'd it. So, okay.
Yeah, you played it well. So, um, it's your equity. Curious how much more equity you're.
Does he have to call with king 10?
So when it goes check, check, look at how how much equity your, your ace X has. It's a shit time.
So ace 10 is not the leading reason you bet 86, huh? I think then.
Say it again.
Ace 10 is not the leading reason you bet 86 probably, no?
You bet 86, oh, B86?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is the, the, the ace jack or something like that? The worst value went. Ace queen, ace jack?
Um, okay, so top pair.
Yeah, ace jack. So ace jack is the reason that you want to bet this size.
So when it goes check, check, are you guys curious where bluffs come from?
Ace 10 is the.
Oops. Sevens and eights are in the middle of it. Very bottom are the busted straights.
So queen jack.
The blocking straights.
Yeah. Blocking. What do they block?
Queen jack, that kind of stuff also.
Yeah. Very bottom, all this king stuff that we continued with to that big size.
Yeah.
So all, this is the very bottom of range because he's so capped because he went check, check on time.
Yeah.
So we get to pull all these really, these no equity plus out. Equity.
You block 2%. Are they calling?
The, the.
What's calling an all-in?
The old adage of bluffing from the bottom up. So.
What is calling an all-in?
Yeah, um. Okay, can we, can we see what queen jack and king jack of hearts is doing?
Alright, there's, there's, okay, we'll go one by one.
Sorry, message crashed. I just.
Oh.
That's alright. So we'll go one by one with questions here. So, um, you chose, well, go through what we did in game. You chose a B80 or B75?
So yeah, the 3.5 is a good one for it. Okay.
So, does he have to call with his 10x if he's a solver? And the answer is he's supposed to turn it into a bluff.
Right.
He's supposed to fold king 10, queen, I don't, I don't know why king 10 suited gets turned into a bluff, anybody know?
That's blocker oriented. I mean, that's just the way it works in a solver.
Yeah, but I don't understand what it's blocking.
A bluff?
I'm sorry?
King 10 is probably blocking a bluff. More bluffs than queen 10. Probably.
Off his queen, queen. Does king, queen, queen, jack and king, jack are all equivalent?
Yeah, we'd have to dig, we'd have to dig into it very deeply to figure it out, but we could by looking at what your range is doing. Um, so we'll look at it real quick. So what's your queen x dealing here? So your queen x is supposed to, queen 10, queen 10 queens. Queen jack is supposed, so.
I, I don't. No, I don't bluff. I bluff all my queen jacks, but I have fewer of them.
Yeah. Buff, king jack, yeah. Anyway, so he's supposed to yeah, he's supposed to essentially, it's not value. Fold or shove.
Okay.
No one's gonna find in reality. So, um.
Cause I'm gonna, I'm gonna cry. I'm gonna cry and call.
There. Yeah, but yeah, you don't have, so the other big question is, do you have the the blocker sizing? I thought you would because it went check, check, but.
Yeah, but we just. Yep.
Um, did you have a question, skate?
Um, no, I think we, we saw the, the queen, yeah, I think we went queen jack and the king jack suited. Um, no, I think we we saw um the the queen. Yeah, I think we went uh Queen Jack and the King Jack suited.
Okay.
Cool. Yeah, well, yeah.
Should we move on in life?
Yep, so the logic of so here, the logic of this river donk bet. Against his particular hand isn't terrible, but yeah, the better play is go big and get caught and make all the money from the ace king. But he played weird.
He should even uh call with other hands.
Yeah. Yeah, and the kings. Okay, great. Well, the eights we looked at. Now we're here on this ace three, which is a perfectly fine call, but I should have raised it in my world. Didn't. Uh, this is a good board to defend against from my range. I've got a backdoor. I've got two backdoors and an overcard. I think this is a good check raise.
Especially to that sizing.
Yeah.
Well played.
A real plan.
Yeah. Alright, so little scared, little and then got unscared. Um ace ten should raise and ace six suited. In a tournament is a call. I think this is gonna be.
I think it's a three better fold.
Yeah, no, let's see. Luckily, it's not me. That's good to know. So the ace ten raises. Ace six has a ton of money against him, but that doesn't matter. He just folds. All right. Let's take a look at that. Ace six there real quick. Hold. The button raises. Like the normal size and the small blind is supposed to be re-raising across all the suited stuff. He can fold the ace six sometimes, sure. But you could simplify this strategy and three bet all these and not three bet the king six and be just fine. Uh, or drop the ace two or lose the.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Lose the ace two and raise all the others. Um. So fine, uh ten do suited should fold. And he does. All right, ten ten should raise and take it. But he doesn't. Let's see how bad that ten seven is. Seems terrible to me. But maybe I'm wrong.
Cut off? Yeah, I think it's a full.
Cut off, big blind, ten seven seems way off base. And I'm wrong. Well played.
You can fold it sometimes.
Yeah, well played. I I put the wrong picture. That's a good play. Alright, good. Two backdoors and nothing more and not worth pursuing.
I was thinking about bluffing here um in the big blind against cutoff.
Never. Never. You mean, you mean this?
Yes.
Uh, pre-flop, never.
No, no, on the on the flop here with the with the ace here.
Never.
Never.
Literally with aces.
Um, yeah, but 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 isn't their range so wide like cutoff and and especially button then? That you that you can consider some some kind of check raise bluff?
With some hands, yes, but nowhere near. I mean, but they should be highly. They should be high equity bluffs. And what's a high equity bluff here?
Yeah.
You ten of spades, king ten of spades, and do you want to check raise that as opposed to take its value?
Yes, you're not doing.
On a ace board, you don't do a lot of check raising.
I don't. I don't want to check raise this board at all. Um, except except with value. I I mean, so obviously there's some bluffs. I don't know what they are. Yeah, we'll take a look, Skate. We'll take a look.
Yeah, so maybe that's that's how maybe. Yeah, it's definitely a leak of mine. Like, uh, where are my are my bluffs out of position against the wide range?
This is good. We like this. I would not mind seeing in bet. All right, getting there is always good.
Yeah, on this board, I found it also difficult for time of bluffs. Uh, low boards, I can find them more easily.
Yeah, we'll do. We'll uh we'll take a look. We'll we'll take take a look at that just at the flop. Yeah, we'll take a look at this hand real quick.
Makes sense.
Yep. Um, so you you setting this up, Larry?
Yeah, uh, full disclosure, guys, I'm a bit distracted today. My uh favorite soccer team is playing a match right now, which I'm watching on the side. But.
No problem.
I will set this up.
Okay, you got it captured?
I do.
Okay, moving on. Y'all, when you got it. Ace King raises. Queen, Queen should three bet him. Ace King should uh just raise again and let these two guys get it all in and fight over it. Let's see if that's where it goes. Um, the ace king also, by the way, can doesn't have to four bet the three bet. He can just call if he wants.
Now.
Edition, I think he four bets a lot.
Yeah, I I I would. And the queens here just call. They they or they. That's a fine thing.
Yeah, I've played.
Yep, that's just fine.
I think that's what I should.
All right, you wanna look?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's finish this hand.
Oh, sorry. Are you in the middle of this hand?
Yeah, he just calls. He's going. He's going. You have aces or kings or you don't. And I'm fine with where I am. It's one or the other. And it's the other. Yay me. All right.
What kind of hands can button call here against under the gun open? I'm guessing aces, right? Only aces.
Oh, you mean?
Like an um.
You mean, we have he jammed? Oh, you can call queens. You can call. You can call jacks. You don't like it, but you can do it. Well, I'll show you. Um, we'll come. Well, let's let's run the other hand and then we'll come back to this one.
All in?
Yep.
Yeah, you can get.
Yeah, you you start following jacks and uh tens and uh some greens, actually.
You guys ready?
Yep.
Yep.
Hey, Dean.
Against play pool, I would uh.
All right, so we've got ace check for uh imposition has tens. And O P has ten seven suited.
Alright.
Um, so this is obviously gonna be a really good hand for the imposition raiser. Which we see here dominates. He should probably arrange bet.
You should range bet, I think.
Yeah, close to arrangement.
And he can range that large. He can range that big. With the ace jack.
Have big bet, but then maybe he doesn't range bet.
There's.
We're enforcing effective stacks, guy.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so yeah, he's got lot. He got. He gets bets across all sizes here because he just he's dominating. So the other question for me would be.
But notice that he's checking frequency is way high. It is forty percent.
Yeah, but that's because he is uh betting big also.
Yeah, because he's got all those big bets.
The other interesting thing to me, when I look at these, which I'm trying to get into my head, is that he's got these big bets across all of his range except with the middling portion of his range, right? These second pairs.
Yeah. Big bets in polar.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's polar. So I just find it interesting and I, you know, I think I'm trying to incorporate into my game with these betting packs.
Right. And the king and the king king is so marginal that it's the one that just doesn't bet.
If you bet, so that's small.
And that. Alright.
Yeah, and so his ten ten here is in a kind of a weird spot.
So he's perfectly reasonable.
So, but he gets. What did he do in game?
He checked.
Checked.
Yeah, well played. So all of these, all of these middling pairs are checking.
But I think, but what do you do against a small bet?
Right. This is what this is what Skate wanted to know. Against his small bet, do we check? What's our check raise bluff from from the big blind and I said?
Okay, so if imposition did small bet, what are our check races?
Yep.
Yeah.
Come on, pure calling range. There we go. All right.
So we only have one size and that looks like it's like a five X or like a B one twenty five. And here it is. Um, there's a couple of other ways to look at this, but.
All hands under the jack are false, except for some.
Values, the value is all, the value is concentrated in two pair and the bluffs are the straight draws. The high straight draws and the fours.
And the low.
Yeah.
So if you look at it in breakdown and we'll um.
Back to straight.
Clear this. So, yeah, I guess the big thing is sets, which unlock everything is sees every time. Are going to three bet his two pair, which are going to three better high frequency. So maybe skate, the thing to think about this is that the value that you're always three betting and not slow playing. Not always. Obviously, the sets are are two pairs that are high frequency and sets always. Now, the question is, where is where, what is the shitty part of this range? So.
Seven five.
Yeah, so gut shots here, right? Gut shots with a backdoor flush. And then these gut shots with the backdoor.
Right.
Also seven five suited in there.
So straight draw draws with added equity backdoor.
Right, and I don't mind learning. I don't mind learning to to find those, which I said I didn't have. I go, I'm just gonna call those and try to get there. I don't want to get knocked off them. But it's those. It's those. It's that little island at the bottom left. Which is gonna be your five, six.
Yeah, good call.
I'm just never gonna find those and I'm.
Yeah, which is fine. I think if you find. Oh, sorry, Skate, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanna know what kind of hands they are like five, six, six, seven. Those kind of like uh nothing like air hands, right?
They don't block.
They're double backdoors is what they are.
They have. I think they uh block uh block the least false.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think I think if you miss these, you're fine. But but if you begin to incorporate these.
Yeah.
You're in good shape. I mean, these aren't obvious to everyone, but I think, you know, these sessions are beginning to make them more obvious to us, really.
Yep.
Yeah, because like you you get to fold his like uh, I guess, nothing that has an ace in his range.
Ten nine.
You should fold a lot.
Yeah, like a pairs.
Green eight, green seven.
So does that? Yeah, so that's that's what you.
There's the bluff.
There's a death Queen seven.
Do you guys wanna? This hand looked interesting. Do we wanna run it out or we want to just move on to what you're doing now?
Let's move on.
Okay.
For me. I mean, I guess we can give him the next card. Let's give him um and see if we bet and see if we donk out our uh our spade draw when we pick it up. Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, because this guy got the backdoor flush, right?
Yeah.
So it went to check, check in game, right?
Yeah.
And.
And you'll see that ten seven is not one of the bluffs.
And we'll and we'll see that.
Six or something like that?
Four of spades. Where spades comes. Now, with our F Ds, our turned F Ds, do we bluff? And I my answer, I think, is gonna be a high combination. We do so. So all our, yeah, so our flush draws.
I'm mixing.
Yeah, we we are. We are polarizing after we get that check, check. So um with our draws.
Yeah.
Do you guys? Do you guys mind if I just run this line out? So let's say we polarize.
I want to check here, just so I understand, because I the colors are hard to make. Are we polarized at one seventy five or one twenty five? On those, when we bet the ten seven suited, how big are we betting it?
Uh, okay, so so this is the combo we're we're betting, right?
That's our combo.
And we are betting. Uh, here, I'll make it bigger. So you should. So this is, I mean, we've got a shit ton of options for betting.
Mm hmm.
But that's two fifty. It's essentially over bets are really popular.
Okay.
Seventy five all the way up to.
Wow. Yeah, no messing around.
Yeah, so if we the, why don't we take this line real quick, which I think would be interesting? If we, sorry, go ahead, Skate.
No, I'm sorry. Sorry to cut you off, but um so just to be clear, so this ten seven hand on the turn, it likes if it is betting, it likes it likes betting, uh, I see a big bigger here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the turn would be polarizing. It polarizes.
Okay, okay.
Use the term polarizing. You'll sound really smart when you talk to poker people at the live table.
Giving stern glasses or?
Um, okay, so if we bet, if we put a six point nine. My favorite betting size, of course. And we brick. Right? Do we follow through? So let's say he calls.
Ten seven maybe, but um.
And what's the? I think the brickiest of bricks might be like a two of clubs.
Yeah, two of clubs somewhere.
Could could like.
So two clubs. Do we follow through with our ten seven? Let's use that as an example.
A four is also super bricky.
It is.
Four is bricier. A four is bricier than a two.
Our ten sevens not followed.
So the ten seven now will mix and be one fifty. So it looks like we've got, if we go filter.
See, the lower draws are actually.
We go no meat hand. Yeah, our dominant bluffing size is this B one fifty or.
Yeah.
Some shows, but mostly we give up, right? Mostly we give up. But we do get to bluff at some frequency at a B one fifty.
And the lesson here, though, is look at those. Look at the sizes. Look at the smaller bet sizes for this bluff. You know, ten percent is zero, thirty six percent, three percent, sixty two percent, zero seventeen. It's like, no, you're gonna bluff here. You jump up to hundred and fifty, three hundred.
Yeah, but it's also uh uh because you bet quite big on the turn.
Yeah.
You have to make a bigger bet even on the river. Most of the time, at least.
So this should match trips, right? So if we so this be, so this B one fifty, if we clear and go to trips. Yeah, we can see like the trips are using the same sizing. And shoving and the straight that is available.
And the quads.
Just got the wheel. That's mostly shoving because it's unblocking trips.
That makes sense. Like a a four would check the the flop and then bet the turn, right? And then bet big on the river, so.
Yeah, so your plus are gonna mimic your value.
It's funny how solver like it 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 makes more sense to me now how solver likes choosing the hands in which you use uh depending on top top pair and like bottom pair especially too. Like for runner runner, because I mean, at least for me, runner runner comes more often than you think.
Right. So here on this hand, we were looking at this with the uh with the queens here. So we've got, we've got a low jack raise. We've got the button sees and finds those queens and it can call sometimes, but we're never doing that, are we? We're all raised. We're all three betting here. Under the gun come.
Always.
With his a with his ace king suited. I was wrong. I thought the ace king suited um could sometimes uh just call. And maybe that's only a nine handed when you're way in the front. The ace king offsuit can do a little bit of it. He's suited. So he's gonna go up and he's gonna go up to twenty.
There might there might actually be a chance then the ace king is sometimes also calling.
Yeah, yeah. Go for that.
Yeah.
Now, now the queens, queens never fold here, mostly call. And if you wanna shove ma and make your life simple, you're only annoyed when this happens and this seems to happen a lot to me.
Yeah, I I guess pairs are easier to play than ace king, sort of like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, now, and now he goes for it. We are not folding. He goes for it. We are not folding. And it's like you have.
This is on the board and ace king is easier to play.
Yep.
This this looks like a super common error of making a three bet out of position and just just shoveling.
Yeah.
For no known reason. I mean, it's like, I make this sometimes.
Yeah.
You're out of position. You've missed. You're saying to yourself, I've got the over pair advantage. I've got all the aces and kings that you don't. So I'm just gonna shovel it in.
All the ace king.
Can 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 we see this? Is I mean, I'm I'm now that I look at this, is this the board that without a heart, do we check more often with our ace king or 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 not me because we?
Ace king is not in the range, so sorry, can't see it.
Oh, he's on the range.
What?
But he forbid.
He forbid, right? So it's raised.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Everything, everything's in range here.
Sure.
Yeah, we can look at this part if you want. I talked to you guys.
I think at the point when when he makes this bet here. I think this bet is is almost too small to give him the information he wants. Like, is it a pair that you're not gonna fold? It's almost like he should bet twenty now and then give up.
So I I think they, I think in theory, it's a good sizing because of SPR.
Yeah.
But I see your point exploitative way.
Yeah.
So what happened pre-flop? It was raise, re-raise, four bet?
Ray, raise, re-raise, raise three that four bet call.
Yeah.
And then he continues for one third pot.
Right, which is standard, right?
When he gets his answer and then he makes the mistake here of saying, but I want to win. I deserve to win.
Yes, maybe my my question is more on the turn, I guess.
Yeah.
Like, uh, how do you play ace king on the turn now that he calls your flop bet?
Oh, we can run it. So why don't we? If if it's okay with you guys, or what do you guys wanna do?
Yeah, run it.
Run it.
All right, I'll set it up. It's a four bet pot, right?
Four bet pot. And it doesn't matter what the river is, by the way, but this is what the river is.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm assuming you play it just like you had kings or aces is what I'm guessing you're supposed to.
I don't think so.
I'm not a percent of time, no.[1779.28]
I think, I suppose, you're supposed to realize that when this guy calls.
Yeah.
Four bet.
What is this range?
Range looks a lot like, well.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a mistake until I go there, cuz I've gotten lucky on the river there.
His range looks a lot like jacks and tens and queens.
An ace queen that falls on the flop.
Makes queen suited there.
Yeah, yeah.
Which you're beating, and so. Like that.
Yeah.
There are some spade draws, but not a lot.
Yep, ace queen raises, queen, sixes, mostly folds, and you could sneak in a three bet there.
I also find that one of the hardest things to give up, uh, if you could.
There's a raise, and I like the fold of the sixes there. This seven, three is atrocious. And it, and look at, it's a, it's not only, it's also on a broken stack, which is not good, but the most important thing is, it's not me. That's what we like to see. All right, you got it?
Yeah, I've got it. Wanna go over it?
Yep, let's see it.
Resume, sorry, guys. Okay. See it, okay?
Yep, yep.
So, so format pot, right? So let's just look at ranges real quick. U T G is going to four bet pure. With this holding.
Mm-hmm.
Shove here a lot. Um, one thing I've been trying to avoid, which I've been doing too much of lately, is I've just been shoving ace king off to a three bet. Out of position at a higher frequency, I need to mix that up more.
Mm-hmm.
Um. He gets to mix with his queens.
Yeah, you're not wrong each time you do it, but you're wrong every time.
Yeah, you're wrong if it's every time, yeah, exactly. So this flop is really, I mean, even though it's a format pot, and I. And you're out of position, let's just look. Obviously, this is a really bad, um, flop for the four better.
Yeah.
Which we could see demonstrated here, right? Cuz he's got his, he's got all of his, uh, four of bluffs, which miss. And this guy now has got more. He's got a denser, it's a more condensed range.
Yeah, well, can we say that? The original four better missed with his ace king, his ace queen, and yeah, just pretty much that. And then he.
Well, the other thing to think about to skate, not to interrupt you, sorry, is that, um. The four better is supposed to call his little pairs at a certain frequency. I'm sorry, the four bet caller is supposed to call his pairs at a certain frequency. So he's got all these sets, which the, um. Out of position player does not possess. He's got four percent, yeah, he's got like four percent of his range is the knots, the uber knots. Which the out of position player does not have. And they've got equal amounts of over pairs that afford a pot, but you could see, here's, here are the uber nuts represented in the linear equity graph.
Well, can we safely say that? When under the gun four bets, he's gonna have more of a value range because his gloves are gonna be. More of the ace king off and the ace queen off sort of hands.
No, we can't.
That, that shove.
Not on this board, huh?
We can't because is of what the imposition calling range is.
Yeah, look at how strong that range is, look at how strong the button is.
Yeah. So if you look at the button range here. He's got, he's got a, yeah, he's got trapping aces at a certain frequency.
Right.
And then he's got these queens and jacks. He's got, he's got, just got a mu- you can look at it also, if you look at the amount of combinations, he's got a condensed range, he's got twenty-one combos.
Right.
That's so, he's got twenty-one hands that he plays this way, as opposed to the U T G player, which has got forty, fifty-four combos.
So can we say this, we both have aces? Well, no, no, no.
Yeah, they both have aces.
Is when we miss, you know, when, when the, when the in, out of position player, the four better. Is on the part of his range that isn't monster, that isn't aces, kings, queens. The rest of his range does very badly on this board. Look at us when we miss. Uh, you know, when we, we're on the weaker part of our range, weaker part of our range is four, five, a pair. Five, six, a good draw, six, seven, a pair, seven, eight, a pair, and a backdoor, all suited. Those are the hands that miss. Then we have a few ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, ten, he's got more of that.
So while we don't have, another way to look at these equity buckets, while we don't have. Uh, aces and kings at full frequency, we have a spattering of aces, but then if you go to good hands. We've got, we crush him in good hands, right? Which, yeah, so that is why. In a format pot, which, you know, obviously aren't very often. He's gonna check a lot.
Right.
Yeah, also, yeah, out of position, that's also in.
Yeah, and I can't find the mute button, and I want to cough. There's a mute button holding, guys.
And he's allowed to, but he is allowed to bet that ace king, and if you look at the sizing on that ace king. It is mostly the fifty percent to get his answer. It is, he does the twenty-five and the ten, but not very much. That's what it looks like to me.
Yeah, so with his.
Heart is paired one, let's see with the hearts what he does.
So king high, ace high, if he's gonna bet with his king high and ace high. He's choosing a B fifteen.
Right, and that was my, and that was gonna be my argument for him, was if he's gonna do that, he better, let's try to get a real answer.
Yeah, so did he do a B fifty?
He did a B, no, he did too small, that was the point. He also has ace hearts, let's, uh, go over onto the heart side and see what, see if that makes a difference.
I think he bet one third, right, with his ace king.
He bet.
Oh, that's right, he chose the tiny size.
He bet twelve into thirty-eight, he bet.
So he bet like, so B twenty-five is certainly a thing.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think, yeah. I would imagine this is one and done, so let's just give him this. B fifty, let's just run down this line real quick. He's gonna, so this also is an important thing about these hands, is that at this S P R. When, um, out of position has, is loaded with ace, ace king. Right, ace king is a massive part, it's a massive part of his range, cuz he's doing this with, uh, the twelve combos of ace king off. Um, we just shove these hands for protection at a certain frequency in position. I've seen this, so I run like custom solved mostly for that pots, because those are the only ones my computer can handle. And you see this over and over again, where you're. On this board texture, your over pairs just shove it, because they can use the protection more. In a four bet pot, because you're, uh, cuz villain out of position is just stock full of ace acts and king acts.
Right, if he's playing like a solver, but why is Jax holding there a portion of the time?
Um, well, it's, it's folding, well, we can look at the suits, it's really based on suits, right? Um, it looks like it's shoving more when it's. Blocking his continues with the spade.
Yeah, and the dimes is also important, but, uh, spade even more.
Yeah.
Because he's gonna call. With his eight, with any spade, right? Gonna call, not any spade, he's gonna call with his suited spades.
Ace queen suited, I have a very good.
So, yeah.
Go back one node, go to, go to the gun, or go to under the gun right there, and let's take a look at his ace king suited, specifically his hearts, let's see. The hearts, the hearts check a lot.
You want to have back, a backdoor draw.
They wanna have those back.
Yeah, wants to have a backdoor, front door.
But with that suit, when he bets it, he bets the small size almost as much as he bets the other sizes. Take a look at that. This is, so his sizing was not crazy. For that.
His size was not crazy, so, okay, let's, let's. But I'm, let's give him a B twenty-five.
I'm sure he does not jam this call.
No, he don't, and then, he, now he, now the interesting thing for me also is that here, when we get a B twenty-five. And the S P R doesn't get ridiculous, we just call more.
Yeah.
So. He calls. Skate, what were you gonna ask, sorry?
No, no, uh, like, the only thing I'm thinking about this hand was, is like, what kinda hands is button three betting against U T G? On, on, on this flop, I mean, it can't, it can't be sevens, right? It has gotta be. Can it be nines? I mean.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, you, you check raise then, or? You can mix them, yeah.
May- maybe mixing nines and then tens plus, is what I'm maybe guessing.
So, yeah, his ace high and king high, he's gotta have. Probably has to have the front door draw to continue.
Yeah.
So he, but his ace king is so, is got a sliver, a sliver of showdown against ace queen, which is a big part of imposition's range. But he's just gonna check it, but ace, jack. He's going to continue the booze.
Yeah, the, the.
But he really needs to have some kind of equity to continue.
The clips, they are almost not there, so I don't matter that much.
Um, yeah, so. Yeah, his, his, he doesn't have an all-in.
Yeah.
Here.
So, I was wrong about his, I was wrong about his bet on the flop being too small. For the ace king, it is, but for his particular combo, it's fine, um, but his bet on the turn was suicide.
I will say, he does have.
Bet that hand way too frequent.
Yeah. I will say that he does have a shove with queens, which I think goes to my previous theory about. Protection for ace acts and king acts, which is a big part of each player's range here. So, cuz I made this, I made this play in a format pot, and I was like, is this stupid or is this brilliant? I was.
It's a very small brilliance.
Yes, which I think fits, yes, I, I, very diminutive brilliance, exactly. All right, uh, should I pass it back?
Yep, here we go.
I got a question, can, can we say that, uh, in that hand, last hand, does button never have ace king cuz he just five bet jams the hand?
No, no, he can call, he can call ace king.
He can call, okay.
He can, he, he can mix, he, he can mix his calls, uh, just looking at that super quick. Um, here's the raise, we're back on button, and he's got a little bit of ace king off, not a lot. And his ace king suited, he jams all, he, he raises all of them.
The solver does that.
Solver does, but people.
At least this solve.
Yeah, yeah.
It's mostly jamming, right, and just some calling with the offsuit.
Mostly jamming, mostly jamming, but, but again, you're, you're, look at how small your calling range is, so it's like you've got. You've got ace queen suited, and remember that you've got three times as many, uh, ace king off suits as ace queen suiteds, so. You're gonna have aces and ace king off suit as often as you're gonna have ace queen suited. Here, represented in the range, in terms of combos. All right.
Yeah.
Ace queen raises, and the sixes do not bother, and looking at that, that is a high jack raise. And the small blind, sixes, I assume, get in there a little bit, yep. There's the sixes getting in there, uh, poker coaching land, we don't have any of the calls here, we just don't have a calling range in the small blind generally. For this. Um, in which case, you're cut out, you know, you could do.
I just simplified my calls and it, uh.
That's what I do.
Tell front about it, you would say, don't call.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna do this, and then we looked at this guy, and let's see if he gets punished or rewarded. Ah, he doesn't matter, he just loses that check, bet, fold, all right. And the size, by the way, on that, on that ace queen, let's see, ace ten, yeah, that's a fine, that's a fine larger sized bet. Um, four into five point five, I like that.
Yeah, with no heart, especially.
All right, let's see if the twos or threes lose any money to me, or if I lose everything on this hand. One of the two things is gonna happen. All right, twos are in there, and the threes, I think should call here.
Uh, yeah.
I think if we turn our hands face up, the threes should call. If he knew what aces, he should call here, is that.
I don't think they, I'm gonna guess, I'm going to venture, they don't mix.
Cut off raise, but.
They call pure.
Big blind, come on, call pure, just pure, absolutely pure.
Yeah.
Just set mine this deep, you're out of position, which isn't great, but against two players, one of them's gonna have something.
Also, you're closing the actions, you don't have to get.
Yes, just, just do it.
You can't get set over set sometimes too, well, you know what they say about deuces, never lose.
Yeah, you can get set over set, and goodbye, hundred and thirteen big blinds. I think.
And I'll see hundred pain.
I hope I only lose. Half of it, I'm not, I'm gonna lose it all.
Let's get a three.
So this is S R P.
Yeah, check.
So that was some error on his part.
Oh, I checked behind, no, no, I'm checking out of position, there we go, I'm checking out of position to check raise here.
So he, he has made a horrible decision.
He loses, he loses a street. Now I think, oh, good, I can value bet him, I've looked small. He calls.
And I think. Should have raised turn.
Come on, heart, yes, he should have.
Yeah.
Hearts. Let's keep the bet small, ten, just call.
Another.
He just calls, oh my god.
Oh.
You're a lucky boss.
Oh, so good. The heart was great because the heart was gonna save me money. If he raised the turn, I go, oh, you hit a king. Great, I don't care, and I lose a ton. When this heart comes, I bet, and he, and he raises me, I go, oh, well. And I, unless he raises me like twenty more, and I lose the twenty more, you know, but I don't lose eighty-seven on this. I love that heart.
I would have been happy to.
Okay.
Would you ever use a check call on river?
Sure, that seems smart too.
Um, cuz it also induces bluffs.
Yeah, that would be smart too.
What can he bluff?
Although, although I think that I'm gonna get, um.
I think if he's holding like, um, ace, three of hearts would be a common one.
Yeah, that's not.
That's a, that's a straight, if he's holding like ace, six of hearts, maybe, that's not possible, if he's, let me try the last one. Any kind of ace, ace of hearts.
I mean, that, yeah, that's what I mean, there's not a lot of bluffs available, uh, if it draws.
Um, now.
Remember, he only had to call a bet on the turn, so he has to have something here worth doing.
Yeah, so he has to have at least a draw or something like that.
Have at least a six here.
Yeah, six, seven even, not, not a six.
Yeah.
I, i- is this board, I mean, now that I think about it, it's a one liner, two straight here on the river, just aces.
It's a terrible board.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a terrible board, except for the threes who folded.
Oh, yeah, he would have hit, he would have hit. Yeah.
Although I don't know if the twos would have let two people get this far.
Yeah, he would have been, well, I don't know, I mean, I would have been more aggressive.
I know. All right, but if I check here, um, I think his bet size is a little bigger, but I have to call. Because like my check here screams of not flush, which means he's got it, but my ten includes flushes and bluffs, so. Yay, all right, excellent. Uh, threes can open and they can also fold, king, queen needs to open, and against the threes, it should three bet. And ace nine should fold to all of that nonsense.
Uh, yeah, so, so. I think you're technically supposed to fold the threes, but I think that you can make. Adjustments if you're not getting three bet, if you, if you, you don't see a lot of, yeah, you can slipper.
Yeah, if, if there's like a limp party going on, you can limp threes, but if not, just fold.
Yeah, no, I don't think I'd limp.
You're not in limp, you're not in limp land.
Oh, not, not limp, but, yeah.
I think I, you can R F I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you, you were about to say, so say it.
You can R F I if the frequency of three bets at the table you're sitting is low.
Yeah, that sounds better, yeah.
And king, queen doesn't have to three bet.
Uh, which means, which means you're gonna be just limping a lot.
Can't three bet, doesn't have to.
Yeah, the, uh, it depends on whose, whose, uh, ranges you're looking at.
Right, and the thing to remember about those threes, when you raise the threes from this position. And you get called, or you get called in multiple places, you're not annoyed. You know, you, you wanted to raise and take it with threes, you just wanted to be done with the hand, but you don't want to be called, the only thing you don't want. Is to be three bet where you have to fold them, and now you've thrown away two and a half big blinds, and you don't even get to set mine.
To, to be honest, I don't even care what, what or how the table's going, like, I'm, I'm gonna fold three, threes here always.
Yeah.
So I do also.
Yeah, for, for like reverse implied odds, you know, like somebody cut fours or fives, yeah.
But when he does it, which is perfectly fine, this king, queen on the cutoff. Is a three, get him.
Yeah, I, I looked at another also from G T O resident, uh, that's fifty percent.
Yeah. We're also at N L, we're not at N L fifty, we're at N L two hundred. But we don't have that.
Yeah, okay, that's true.
We don't have that rate, but whatever. It's fine anyway, but once he folds, which we're totally okay with, this is a raise and take it. I don't think that ace nine is supposed to defend, he raises all the way to three big blinds. And take it, I don't think that ace nine is supposed to defend, he raises all the way to three big blinds. Doing that before. And, uh, this should be ace ten and above, I think, in the big blind, to even, to even play back.
Against the three, yes, I think.
Yeah, when he gets the three, I think that's the part of the range you definitely shave off.
Look at that, against the two point five, the ace nine is too tight a fold, I was wrong.
Yeah, but this had, I, he gets a three, so.
Move it up one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, that's, looks, that makes sense. Alright. Ace queen raise and take it. By the way, and this side with the weird three seven, remember that weird three seven call early, earlier?
Betting a two big blinds, I would call with ten nine.
Alright, with the two, uh, we haven't seen him do anything else weird, so maybe that was a misclick, but three seven. Well, I was with you, I decided for two big blinds, nine, ten is in there.
Well, let's look at pot odds, pull back, pull back one. So twenty two, thirty five, so, I mean, if you're pot odds, it's a call.
But look at pot odds realization and it gets worse, but I'm not dominating. But I'm beaten in an ugly way, alright, how much more money am I gonna lose? I'm gonna lose, it's more big blinds, check, bet two, call, yep, check, bet again, fold. And fold, even with a draw. Pair and a draw, because you don't know that when the, uh, jack comes in, the club and the diamond are dirty. Oh, why do, listen, why do I not listen?
Jack of spades, yes.
Alright, that, that's done, and so how much more did I lose when I said, I said I wanted to lose six more? I lost seven and a half more, alright.
There you go.
I think it's a better fold on the turn. Should we look?
Yeah, it's kind of a good hand to look at.
Yeah, probably, but we don't have, uh.
I think we need to have a big blind open, oh no, we can't, not from the button.
Maybe having the ten of diamonds blocks his, uh, loves.
Uh, maybe I first somewhere the small, uh.
Having a nine, ten just is bad. Right, big blind. We can play this. Nine, ten is a, nine, ten is a perfectly good call, even against the, uh. The two point five size, so we're fine.
The bottom of your option.
Uh, you can look at, uh, raise two big like bunch.
Yeah, alright. If we've got it at two big blind, if you've got it two big blind, uh, sim, take it.
No, we don't.
Alright, we'll just.
You're supposed to call the ten nine off it, uh, two point five.
Right, okay, are you ready with it, or should I move on?
Don't you have the two big blinds in?
I don't think they have that.
Change.
Okay, I, I'm ready, we're ready?
Yeah, you ready, let's, yeah, okay, there we go.
They have a lot more sense nowadays, huh?
They do, um, so they have any? Uh, GTO, which is a, it gets, goes from two EP. The two point three middle position is two point five, and they have just two point five across all positions.
Yeah, I don't see that.
Mine, so that's, that's strange.
Yeah.
And so we can see it here, two point five.
Any, any.
It goes two, two, two point three, two point five.
Yeah.
I have two, two point two five, three point X, and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, take a look, is, what, is the rake different? Let's take a look, is it a rake situation?
That's a rake situation, yes.
Which rake are you at, Yas, let's, let's go to that.
Uh, it doesn't say what rake it is.
Alright, well, then we're gonna do, then we'll run this one because we got it, alright.
Raise here. Call.
Call with ten nine. I am not finding that, I'm not finding that three bet with ten nine there.
Ace of diamonds, queen of diamonds, nine of clubs.
NL one of rake actually. So it's different rake.
Uh, so obviously this is gonna be really good for the button, check.
He bet.
We might overfold, considering how good this is for the button, so yeah, he's supposed to, he gets big sizes, so I. So, yet, I don't quite understand the theory behind. Why we get big sizes, big blind versus button, when big bu, this is a, they've got a shit ton of combos here, so if we look combos real quick.
The board is wet with no, um, with no completed equity.
Look at our amount of combos, we're talking about two hundred ninety one versus four fifty six. Yeah, that might be, yeah, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I, let's just look at ranges real quick, we already just looked at ranges, let's look at equity. So, yeah, I mean, clearly equity advantage, clearly not advantage across the board, it drives this kind of sizing.
Yeah.
Uh, and so. Button, what was sizing did he choose in game?
He chose the, uh, thirty three percent.
So what do you do with your ten nine, I figure I'm gonna call the size, obviously. Let's see if you're folding any of your nines, I don't think you're gonna fold any of your third pairs to the size.
Then I tweeted this fall or something, ten nine of all.
Ten nine has a little bit of, little bit of folding.
Yeah, so I guess you're shook.
Right, and I, I've got the ten of diamonds, nine of hearts, let's see how bad that is.
Yeah, probably raise that.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, your ten of diamonds wants to check raise at a high frequency.
Ten of diamonds, nine of hearts, okay.
Um, but you get to call as well, so you called, right?
Yeah.
It's, I'm just gonna look real quick, uh. Yeah, we have, we don't, we don't check raises that much on this board.
Yeah.
Because it's so good for him. So. You call, excuse me.
Yeah, but I never fold my ten of diamonds, nine of hearts, that's nice.
Yeah, so then you get the king clubs.
Yeah.
He chose to polarize his size, right?
He bets five.
Two pair.
Yeah.
Seventy five percent or something like that?
He bet five, so that's fifty percent.
A fifty percent.
Oh, that, yeah. Yeah. Five point, no, that's five point five.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, he gets, he gets to polarize on this board, gets B fifties, but he mostly polarizes. Sorry, what size did he choose?
Five point five chips, so let's call that a fifty.
See if that ten nine sneaks in.
Now.
Yeah, you're done.
Yeah, I'm done. You need, you need, I, you need the ten nine with, uh, you need the ten nine of diamonds.
Yeah, if you have the ten nine of diamonds, you're continuing.
Right.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. Good enough. Zoom. Share. And we just played that hand badly. Alright, here we go. Folds to the ace king which raises and takes it. Folds to the jack nine who raises and does not take it, um, the ace six suited. We saw this before skate, um. We are folding, we are folding none of them, and we are three betting, we can three bet. All across, we can just three bet from ace three suited up against the button, if I remember if that was the button, so let's see if it happens. No, the jack nine is not to play, that is too tight. Let's see how too tight. It is this too tight.
It's, uh, just, uh, the bottom of the range almost.
Button. Right, and, and his equity goes. How bad is it? Point oh four, so, you know. Not as bad as folding fives. But when he does it, there we are with that ace six, oh, I was remembering the wrong range. What was the range where, where they were all raises across, where all the aces were raises, was that against?
I don't think, uh, that was the thing, Scotty.
Okay, I'm remembering, oh, maybe it was on the button, that's what it was, or something like this.
Maybe on the button, yes.
That's what it was. Hmm, something like.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, sorry, bold. It was something like, let's see, hijack versus button. Cut off button, that's gonna be there, it's gonna be cutoff versus button, that's who it is, yep, there it is, cutoff versus button. That was the range I remembered, let me try to remember that not so badly and play that, because that would be bad. Alright, so big blind should, so this should have been a raise and a call. No folding. Get back to the right node. There we go, reloaded, no folding suited aces, no folding suited kings, no folding suited queens to the button. Just no folding up there. No folding in the fat part of. Of the tail of the suited connection.
Folding ace three off, ace six off.
Yeah, some folding down here, and folding all of this stuff.
But a lot of players don't do it.
Yeah.
Same, same thing against the, the cutoff?
Cut off is a little tighter.
Against the button, it is.
Yeah, but it's not hugely tighter. There's your cutoff. You fold, you fold your la, your worst queens, no kings, and, and, and more of your ace, more of your offsuit aces go away. But you're still relatively dense in the tail here. You get all the way back to the hijack and you're still relatively dense in the table, in the tail.
Yeah, but, uh.
Do that, but all of your off suits. Yep, and your aces and kings, still there. Suited kings against the hijack, look at them. And against under the gun, they're gonna be like from king four up or something like that, there's still gonna be a ton of them.
Uh, no king four.
What do you mean no king four, look at it. Take that, win king three, shove it all into king four and don't call to king four at all.
I don't find those king five, those king sevens.
There's raises here.
Type stuff, yeah.
Oh, they're fun, I, I can find you, I find you. Because these were in the original poker coaching ranges, and so I learned them.
Yeah.
Yep, look at how fat this still is, look at it. All tons of stuff, alright, and that's what happened. Uh, the four three, by the way, that's sitting here, if this was in the big blind, is, is, uh, is even in some of those fat things, even the four three. It goes away, like, if they're, if you're nine handed, it goes away, like low jack minus one and things, alright. Ace jack should raise and take it, ace six is not a defend here. And he raises to three big blind. Making the ace six even less of a call.
Way out of line.
Way out.
He needs, he needs suited ace, and, uh, ace six and ace seven are the worst.
Yep, look at how out of, look at how out of line he is at two point five. At two point five, look at that ace six, how out of line that is.
Yeah.
Now, now, yeah, right, now push it up to another half a big blind, and it's even worse. And he's dominating. Check, um, kings are really good for this range compared to this range, he can bet range at this board. He does and takes it. Okay. Uh, ace king raise, ace four suited, does not fold.
Nine's open, nine's open.
Oh, nines, thank you, nines raise, ace kings re-raise, ace four suited gets the hell out of the way. Raise, call.
Ace four.
Ace four suited should play.
This is interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would like, I mean, can we get some calls in position here with the ace king especially? Well, yeah, let's see this.
One is, can we get them? Yes, we just did, should we? No.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say that, um. CJ, who I watch a lot, who plays cash.
Yeah.
He does roll for this at a very low frequency, in position only on the button. And I think it's like, he rolls and I, I think he was kind enough to tell us once, he rolls for ten percent. So he, he did put this in his, uh, checking range, I mean, his calling range, and. I guess it makes it's board coverage, and I guess you just want, you know, it's kind of a semi trap.
We keep their worst aces there.
And also, it allows for the most fun play in all of cash poker. What is the most fun play in all of cash poker in the situation where you flood ace?
Back raising, when the big.
Get them back jam like a boss.
Back jam against the, against the, the squeezes.
Yeah, so if you're playing against the proper pool, and with the proper frequencies, these guys should, these guys should squeeze at a very high frequency. And then you get to back jam like a boss, which is fun, which is.
Don't wanna see a flop.
Yeah.
Right. That's gonna happen a lot, like against the big blind, good player, he's gonna see, uh, a, a butterfly and be like, oh, that's not strong, and just jam.
Well, yeah, it's also dead money, right?
Yeah, uh, so, one thing to take a look at this range here on the button, is look at this button range versus cutoff. If you eliminated every call, button versus cutoff, you wouldn't be that far out. Look at how much more calling you do against the hijack on the button, now it's a significant part of the range, now look at the load deck. So those button calls, you know, when you're thinking about the hands, you go, should I be calling this on the button, against the cutoff? Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to, I don't think, I don't think there's a single hand that you have to call. Button versus cutoff. Because you could fold, you could fold these slivers, and every one of these you could raise. You know, what, what, what hand is, what hand is doing the majority of calling, ace ten suited? Yeah, so you, you wouldn't be wrong to just, to not have a flattening range button versus cutoff, you wouldn't be that wrong.
Make your life simple, and then start learning a post flop more.
So there we go.
Yeah.
Once he does it, I think the ace four is definitely in there.
No, I, 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 I do have a question about this ace four, because I, I made this exploit, uh, yesterday in a tournament. And, and lost, uh, against hijack, um, hijack, uh, limped for some reason, ace queen off, and then. Button called, and then I had a king, nine offsuit in the big blind, and I just started to jam, am I supposed to be jamming?
That's a tournament, we don't play tournaments here.
Okay, well, sorry, next week, next week.
Next week, absolutely. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't think king, I don't think king nine is a, is a jam there. Yeah, that, eh, eh, yeah.
Uh, depends, of course, on stack sizes, et cetera, but then.
Yeah, I was, I was like limp, limp, uh, let me just jam here, take it down, but nope.
Okay, so looking at this, uh, looking at this range, notice, uh. Eighty percent folds from the big blind. Nine percent folds from the big blind in this situation, if the button doesn't call, and we have worse pot odds. Our folds go down, pot odds are not the important thing, reverse implied pot odds are the important thing. And you have more of them as more players come in, but on the suited side. The value of ace four suited, point three nine without the caller, with the caller. Value of ace three su, ace four suited drops down significantly, but you still can't fold it, cannot fold a suited ace. In this situation. Was not, good for him.
I would three bet a lot too.
Like solver does not see like the exploit, like solver does not jam big blind because.
Oh, not, self doesn't do any, solver's not, solver's not doing. Yeah.
Yeah.
But it does do squeezes, and ace four is in there. Ace four is in there for a squeeze, it would not be a good squeeze today. Because this, because this.
I don't know, if an ace comes on the flop, then, uh.
Yeah, you're not gonna lose that much money with the ace on the flop, you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose a chunk, but also he's on a broken stack. Making his ace four suited less valuable.
Yeah, that's true. So for a caller.
Check, bet, I don't hate that bet.
I think on a broken stack, you should even, that three bet more.
Yeah. And now.
Uh, at least not, don't fold.
Yeah, no, definitely no folds, check raises here.
Out of position with the, he should realize and just, just call.
With, with the backdoor straight, and it, if he gets jammed on, he can call.
He has a backdoor straight and an off card.
An overcard, yeah, and the straight flush, this can't be wrong, though. And then getting there is always good, but he's not gonna get that much of, but the nines are now gonna bet, are gonna now slow down, and how big does he bet on the river? It's pot, I guess.
Um, yeah.
Doesn't even get a call, doesn't even get his implied odds.
Yeah, he should have check raised.
He was got, yeah, he's gonna get some money with a check raise, or if he didn't get some money with a check raise, he, he made himself, he didn't need to get there. Either way, a good thing. King ten, that's a good raise there, you could fold it sometimes, uh, diamond, I would fold.
I would fold always.
Yeah, we'll see, okay, and then fold, 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 nine, ten should raise and take, nine, ten should raise, and three, five should defend. Raise, oh, definitely defend now, definitely defend, alright. So looking at that low jack right there, that king ten and the low jack is a quarter. is a quarter, quarter of the time. Um, I find this quarter of, if the first card is a spade on spade day. Alright.
Um, can, can we look at king, jack off?
Sure, right here, king, jack off. It plays 100% of the, 100% of the time in that position. Alright, here they go.
Okay.
I don't think I want to check raise this three, five here. I think I want to realize my equity.
Yeah, that's what I normally do, but I think the solver will check raise sometimes.
But if I do check raise and get re-raised, I don't have to fold. I have a straight draw and a flush draw. That's.
Backdoor flush.
Backdoor.
Backdoor, backdoor flush draw and a straight draw. So that's and it's, and it's an up and down straight draw. So I have eight outs plus half of, plus counting half of the other ones. So no, I'm not I'm not 50% to make it, but I'm going to, but I'm 30, 39%, I think on this flop. If, 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 that was if he had an ace, I think I'm 39.
Yeah, and the dews and the seven are, uh, of, of course the back, or at least the backdoor is a lot of value, right?
Yeah, yeah. So he bets, um, he bets a mixed bet between small and large, you know, bigger than a third, but just alright. Play it like that and win. That's always a good way to do it.
I'm assuming we have, we seem to saw, we saw this spot like a few minutes ago against cutoff versus big blind. I'm, I'm guessing we have more check raises versus button.
Great. Like that. Which also gives us the very important lesson, which is you cannot profitably range bet from the button versus the big blind on ace low, low.
Right.
Range bet smaller.
No, it's not a good, yeah, it's bad range bet small. That is not.
A lot of checking goes on in these boards.
A lot of checking.
And it's not your, that, that, that is not your flop, even though you think it is.
Rage better than get more fills than I suppose to.
And now, now we see why.
Yeah. Alright. We see one of the whys. Alright, here we go. Uh, queen five suited here, that's too, that's too loose. Ace ten raises and takes it. Good for them. Ace ten raises.
And.
And takes it.
Should take it.
No, look at that.
Limpse.
Eight, ten limps. Making this guy go, he can't, he can't have a strong enough range. Alright. You know, this is going to work out badly for both of them.
Yeah, unless he bets twice, uh, big.
Yeah.
He's using the Jeremiah Williams strat on its broken stack. B50 after you isolate them.
Yeah, both, uh, broken.
He folded.
Sorry.
Oh.
Limp fold.
That is that, what do you want? Did he want to get an ace and be?
That is why you have to isolate those limpers.
Yeah.
That's, well, that, that's where all the money's coming from, right?
Yeah. It, it, yeah, it's like.
Most of the time, tough fish, that's all, yeah.
So when he flaps, when he flops an ace, he loses against the real hands. When he flops his kicker and he beats the real hands, he loses by folding.
One thing I'll say there with that hand is, uh, cognitive reinforcement. So obviously we are gonna I have a pretty wide isoling range to a limp.
Mm-hmm.
And I need to think about the fact that, yeah, sometimes it really blows up my face when they are stubborn with their second pair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But a lot of times they do shit like this and it's really baffled.
Yeah, and you didn't even know. You thought, you thought you had nothing.
And you never see it, so you don't know, right?
Yeah.
They fold them.
And so you shy away from aggressive plays because of negative cognitive reinforcement. You only know it when they.
When it goes wrong.
Call you down with your bluff, but it works, when it works, you just don't remember it.
And the third bet, that I find tricky.
Right. Let's raise and take this, shall we? Yeah, yeah. Betting, betting three times is.
Yeah, the triple barrel is difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And often wrong.
Especially when they call the turn.
Two point two five from that position. And someone is in a mood with a, a bad three bet, with a bad size and a bad.
Bad, bad.
Bad, bad, bad. Alright. Bad, bad, bad is going to stay bad, bad, bad.
Bad, bad.
What a good XR spot. Let's see if he finds it. He's also blocking ace, king and king queen, which is really important.
That's nice, yeah.
And he's blocking all the flush draws.
Yeah, and if he has to play for it, go ahead. Nope, he wants to get there.
Uh-oh.
He's saying the words aces to himself. And this guy.
Thank you, man.
I see.
But if this guy bet pot, you might have to fold the ace queen here.
Yeah.
You don't fold a half pot. Alright, but.
Let's see if he finds a triple.
Bet.
I think he will. Bad.
Do you guys want to see if this is a XR at a high frequency?
Yeah, yeah, let's see what, let's see how that is.
It might not be in a three bet pot, but I think it is.
Yeah.
I don't know if ace queen if, uh, this indeed, because you have two big cards.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll.
It becomes more.
Alright, I'll set this up, you guys along with your existence.
Alright, let's see. This was, that was villain 1133, who are being critical of. Alright. This should fold to the ace three who should, who should open this. Ace three, um, actually, I think, I'm thinking this mixes ace three on the button. And in the old. What does it do here? Yeah, it mixes, but it mixes heavy. So let's just, just play it.
I open bit too much.
Don't need to raise the three big blinds and take it. Alright. Fold to the king five suited who should raise. Find that, that's me. And she did, against ace seven suited, beaten and dominated, just like I like. But that happens. Yay.
Um, I don't mind the fold out of position.
I think it's right. I think it, I think the fold is right. Ace seven suited.
You can't three bet, I sense.
You can.
We three, we three bet the ace five, ace four, maybe ace three.
Well, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's full frequency.
Right, I don't know why.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright. So the.
Alright guys, you want to take a look?
Yeah, let's take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Cause yeah, like we know ace six, ace seven is the worst, so I'm pretty sure that does not.
He'd just be an ace five. Yeah, I think it, I would just do it.
Ace five, ace four, maybe.
Five is, uh, I think it goes down, I think.
Queen, jack suited, maybe jack, jack ten suited.
Yeah, the old poker coaching in the aces, I think they put, I think they went down to the ace eight suited and the ace five, ace four, something like that in that range. But they weren't pure. They weren't.
Right.
Alright, here we go.
Alright, so this is obviously three betting range, 10% of hands, go three bet. And here, and then the TG is supposed to call with this range. Yeah, and, um, he's got, I, yeah, I call pure here. So.
Hold on, go back a second. Where's, where's the nine, 10 offsuit? I don't see the nine, 10.
Those are in the customizable AIs.
Okay, yeah. So the ace queen calls and can do some four betting, but.
So who's who's got, who's leading here on this board? It looks like our, yeah.
Yeah, hijack.
Three betters got all these high quality hands.
Yeah.
So we check.
Check ring. With this.
What, uh, we just, I was just thinking theoretically, we've got XRs here. Let's see if it's true.
Right.
So he's supposed to check, he's supposed to bet range, which is interesting. You don't see it very often.
Yeah, guys, and he didn't bet raise range small. He, his size was.
Fifty fifty, I mean.
Yeah. And what he actually did was 50, right? If I remember correctly.
It did be 50?
Turn, on the turn, uh, yes.
Yeah.
On the turn, yeah.
So yeah, so we get, yeah, we get.
Oh, he, he did, no, he did 30, he did 33% on the flop. He did 50 on the turn.
On, yeah, on the flop, yeah.
So, yeah, so B20, I should, you know, B20 is not really used to game, but not many people.
Yeah, they should, uh, mortals, uh, skip a B25.
So the big question here is what, the big question for me always is what size it? So when he bets here, our pot is 14. So he goes about a B125 pot, I guess. He's supposed to go to 18 with his check raises. And so his check raises should be, um, clear.
So he goes 4.5x side, he, he goes to 4.5 of what the bet was. The bet's about, the bet was about four and he jumps it up to 18, 19.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, he's doing, he's got a lot of check raises with his, these are just his, his draws. These are all his draws. So all his draws are raising half the time.
Mm-hmm. Except for the ace four. The ace four is so good. And so bad. The ace four compared to the ace queen, it's got no, it, it, it's got less showdown value and it's still got, and it's got that, uh, it's the same straight.
Uh, what? Yeah. So you're saying it benefits more from folds?
Yeah. Yeah, because the ace queen is a backdoor straight. This one's got a, uh, already got a gut shot. So it's, tons of equity there.
Well, it's, I'm curious who has more equity. So let's just look real quick. So, yeah, it's got a lot of equity. Got 53, 55.
Yeah.
Ace three, which has already got a pair of 60%. Alright, yeah, so that's, that's, that's a really good check raise to find.
That call. And I'd like to point out that of his nine, 10, even suited doesn't bet there when he has the nine, 10s. So when he has his nine, 10 suited, if he had played it that way, which he could have done this way, he's so bye-bye. Okay. And it blows up in his face. We played this hand already.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm sharing, not you.
Oh, that's good. You're sharing. Let me get out of there. Share. Okay. This was our hand. We were at, yeah, the king five, which should raise and the ace seven suited. Let's see what those folds are there.
A decent three bet.
Yeah.
Go. Button versus small blind across the aces. Here, because, because we have those calls.
You have to raise with the button first.
Oh, sorry, idiot. There we go. Now they should go away. There you go. Um, there, you're not, you're not wrong with any of them.
Why is there a zero compared to?
Yeah, but ace seven is almost 100%.
Yeah, yep. So I got lucky.
What is that zero number there? The EV?
EV, yeah, the equity.
So it's indifferent.
It's EV, I think.
Yeah. Strategy plus EV, yes, that's what that is. And strategy plus equity is shut up. There. Alright. Um, looking at this, yeah, so I was thinking too tight from the small blind there. Button is just so wide. Just punch buttons for being on the button. And I got lucky. Then the queen comes and I am perfectly happy that I missed this flop entirely. This is good.
Are you going to bet?
I'm only going to bet once. I'm going to lose that much.
Oh, that's, I would never raise that.
Yep, he just made it very easy on me. Thanks for taking it easy on me. Alright.
Yep.
Uh, fold around to the ace two, which should, which should also fold and then they should just fold to the queen four.
So, so, so in last hand on a paired board, button versus big blind, uh, ace, ace X in the big blind's range is not supposed to fold to like two streets.
I don't know.
Depends on the bet size also.
Yeah.
Right, depends, depends on the bet size too.
And of course, and, and is the, is the pair like a three, a four, a five, you know, kind of card that the button doesn't have? I don't know.
Thousand questions before you get an answer.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, but I do know that this queen 10 here should open. Even on a broken stack, this queen 10 should open. Uh, ace eight, open and take it. Ace seven fold, ace jack, open. And I don't think this king 10 should defend. It does in tournaments, but I don't think you should defend that in cash.
Maybe if you defend this.
That's a fold, I think.
Yeah. I don't think so.
Just a, um, offside question, because I've not been paying full attention. We've just not seen as much stupid stuff as we have previously at this, um.
Right, we haven't seen a ton of limping. We've seen some. Uh, we've seen some weird limps, um, and we saw that weird 10, nine hand and we saw that weird seven, three hand, but they, they seem to be anomalies.
Yeah, so it's safe to say that at this, at this buying level, there is le, there are less fish, but there's still fish.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's true.
A different kind of fish, huh?
Yeah.
What, uh, this is.
Less whales.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And looking at this, that was the, uh, the hand that we were asking about was king 10 offsuit. Yeah, the offsuit branch is not well represented here. That's a good fold.
Yeah, I think one thing to remember is like for our suited and offsuit Broadway, queen 10 is the worst. And I'm assuming followed by king, king 10. Um, maybe.
Uh, no, no, I see, you see king 10, you see king 10 open, you see jack 10 open. You see king, king 10 is in there more than jack 10.
Right, but definitely not queen 10.
Yeah, queen 10 is the worst.
Yeah.
Queen is yucky. Okay, uh, raise and take it. Raise to the, okay, folds to the 10 do suited who should just fold. Just let, give it to the king five. Good. Yeah, the number of times we said this should happen and it does compared to the, compared to the nine-handed game. Um, now there are decisions to be made, but we see it. Um, ace, jack suited should raise and ace six suited should lose some money. And I should lose the money primarily by calling, although there is some three betting of this hand, I bet. And he goes up to the three, so that should push me down. Okay, there we go. We're going to call it. And that is cutoff, which is the big blind, looking at it. Just just no raises there. Just don't need to, just the, just the bottom. Alright, call. And, oh, good, I'm not losing any more money. There we go. Unfortunately, raise and get re-raised.
Yep.
And fold.
Full fold, fold.
Yep, so it's a good fold, but it isn't. Yet more unhappiness for our hero. Fold, uh, six, seven. I don't mind that six, seven open.
It can make.
See if he does. So he limps. There you go. So he limps. There you go.
garbage.
You wanted to see something bad. Larry, there's something bad.
Only matter time.
Yep, alright. And this limp should lead to nothing interesting. Nobody really should squeeze this. I like the six, seven fold there. He didn't make the mistake of thinking, oh, it's cheap. Um. And I have gotten in the habit, um, of some big blind hands here. Uh, of raising against these limps, the thing that the limp range is so bad that I, that even out of position.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Better than that. But the other way you do it is you just go, thank you for the flop that I don't deserve, that I would never have seen. And my now inside straight draw with two undercards, check. And just bets hoping, and I don't think I fold to that size, but it's not me. So he folded.
I would fold.
Okay.
You have a broken stack and you have two undercards.
Yeah, broken, that's true.
It's not sure.
And take it. Raise nine, eight on the button.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, raise and have the queen ten defend. Oh, no.
No, it's, it's ten, nine. It's not nine, eight.
It's not an E, right? Is it?
Is it?
It's not nine, eight.
Oh, you're right. It's ten, nine, ten, nine and ten eight. There's a sliver.
Ten, eight.
I don't need a little sliver.
I, I open it all the time, but
Yeah. Ace five, fold, queen jack. Queen jack is a good open in this position and it should work.
Yeah.
He does. Three unnecessarily. Right. And when I say three unnecessarily, I mean three if he's, if he's doing regular two point fives. If he's chosen three as a size, that's okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Ten, two raises, king, queen should not fold the button.
Can't fold.
Can or can't?
Can.
Can, okay.
My world at least.
Yeah.
Off, right? It could fold offsuit and then
I think it's close.
I don't think it's, oh, it's got, it's got it's got folds in there, but it's, the main thing is it's, it's, it's a bad hand to call.
Yeah, it's, it's close. Sorry.
And he knows that. Uh, and the tens should not fold.
Nope.
And they shouldn't, and they should not four bet. I don't think they four bet.
Uh, no, I think you need what, what do you need to?
I think some of the time.
Yep.
Can you do?
Yeah, you can, but I, I would, I would move the nines and tens, you know, here. I don't think you need to find this with tens and certainly not with nines.
If I think they turn three betting off, I just fold.
Just fold it. Yep.
Makes sense.
He decides to do that, which is not a thing.
I mean, it's not hard.
There is not a cam there. Yeah. But it's gonna work.
Yep.
He's proud of himself.
Yeah. Raise, raise that jack eight and take it.
I'll limp. Oh, chew. I thought this was, uh,
Yeah, yeah. Right, uh, uh, raise the ace king and have the jack ten defend. How bad is that fold?
Uh, against three big blinds, it's close.
I don't think so. You might be right.
Um.
Against the button.
I think jack, jack ten is too good, right? Nine, ten, jack ten is too good.
Yeah, I don't think, I think even for the three, I think you can lose them.
Close, man.
Yeah, I think
You should defend, but it's close.
Yeah, nine, ten and jack ten is too good.
Yeah, yeah, but it does, and it's a broken stack.
Ah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't mind folding, though.
Queen ten, raise and take it. Jack, jack, raise and take it.
And take it.
Ace, fold, jack ten, raise and take it. No, raise and get, raise and get defended against the bet. Raise, yeah, queen ten, defend.
Can't defend, but, um.
Queen ten is an easy defend.
It's not bad, but like, but it's against the button.
Yeah.
It's the button skate. Look at it. Look at it. It's the queen nine where you're, I mean, this is point two nine, this is just too good.
It's only two point five, not that true.
Right, I mean, remember, look, look at the button range. Look at, look at the stuff that's in there.
You got some overs too, right?
Yeah, you got all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
Now, now check fold. You, you missed. Check. And let's get there. Ten, alright, don't fold anymore. Uh.
Call, call.
Yeah, check call is better, I think, than check, than betting out.
Yeah, check.
Seven over, a hundred blacks. Lots of cards on your jack.
Right. And now I think he can bet for value.
Yeah, but maybe.
He's gonna call by nine, you know, he's gotta bet small.
True, but I think, uh, a check would be better because he's not gonna get called by worse at this point.
We're gonna check it out. He's gonna bet and he's gonna get called and we're done. But let's, let's, let's check whether that, let's check that one. Larry?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah. See when, see when the big blind should bet. On this one. Are you Larry's doing something else. Okay. Anybody else wanna run this one? Or do you wanna move on?
Sorry, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, good. Yeah, we're gonna run this one.
Okay. Um.
Yeah.
I
Single raise pot.
Sigrid's, Sigrid's pot, uh, button versus big bond, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so check flop, check turn, right? I assume button does not have
The question, the question is whether, the, uh, uh, big blind should bet that, bet the ten on the turn and whether should continue to check on the river.
Either thin value or just check and let the
Yeah.
Are you guys ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Yep.
See it?
Yep.
Okay, um.
Yep.
Yeah, so these boards, these slow boards are interesting. Um, our ace low, low parent is more interesting. Let's see. Yeah, it just kind of, it's a bit unicorny. I guess button has better equity because he's, because big blind lacks all his bets. So, check. Yeah, we range, check a lot, but we also cross our range. My guess is that the big blind, that the low pair, you know, usual, a, a low pair like fours, fives, sixes gives the big blind a nut advantage. But threes and twos doesn't. Let's see, let's find out. Who has more trips? Ranges. Uh, let's go to not advantage, just gonna be, who has more trips?
He has more trees, huh? His range.
Oh yeah, but big line has
Yeah, there's nobody Big line has more trips, but how does that translate into equity, not advantage? So, yeah, so because of those, the trip advantage, having more threes, because it's got six, three, five, three suited, four two seeded and three, three. Um.
Yeah, but the button also has more combos.
We're gonna, we're going to, um, have a little bit of a trip advantage. We're gonna have a little bit of a, we're essentially gonna share the nut advantage, it looks like.
It's very close.
Yeah, it's very close.
Well, I, I think that, yeah, the definition of share the nut advantage would be very close.
Yeah.
Um, yes. So we check.
Mm-hmm.
And he, 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 so common heuristic, right? Paired board. Our betting is only small. We have very few big bets. Uh, what size did he use in game?
He checked.
Check.
Check, check turn and
Right, which, which is jack ten is allowed to do.
Yep.
Um, and I assume that he bets, when he bets his jack ten, it's the jack ten with a backdoor flush and the jack ten without it, we don't. So just let's, let's hit that. On the next street. The next street is the ten of diamonds.
Diamonds, right?
Yeah.
Ten of diamonds, which is interesting because they both have a diamond.
Right, and so now does the queen ten bet out? No.
Uh, he's got leads. Where does his leads come from?
He leads his
Must come from, comes from the very top of his range. But then it's gotta be also coming from the shit part of his range.
Right, the five, six, the six, four, the hands, the, the hands that are, that are near a three inch and crappy, crappy, crappy.
Yeah. So he is trapping his, um, two pair at a, and his, uh, houses at a high frequency here. So the very top is traffic. And then these, these lower trips, he's betting out with. But then where do his buffs come from? Comes from, a lot from five, two, a lot from gut shots.
Right, but look at, look at, look at even below that. Look at the bluffs at the bottom, but really, look at those funny ones.
Yeah, we do a lot of trapping and then
That's like, uh,
It's nothing.
That's air.
It's air that blocks a three.
Yeah, it's a good point. It's air that blocks a three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say four spades need to block, uh, uh, six, three of spades and four
It's blocking, it's blocking his, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying. Uh, okay.
It's four and a six.
So, okay, so he's supposed to, yeah. And so the other question is, what does he do with his second pair on this weird board? He does not, oh, big blind does not donk. What does button do with this second pair on weird board?
No, it's, it's close for him.
So second pair, uh, under, under pair, it's not top pair.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's
They don't bet. King ten doesn't bet.
What is it? Trips. Aces are betting. Under pair.
Then nine.
Checking, look how much under pair are checking.
Yeah.
So under pair, on this weird board, you gotta be careful. So this is something I've also seen watching. So CG has a study session for like an hour, two hours every day. And he just rifles through these solves and, um, we see this a lot in these pair boards. We get, get very, very defensive in our play.
Just get to showdown with a pair.
Yeah, and I think also it's because this, there's not, you know, these can only improve. They have two outs to improve to a boat.
Yeah.
Um, and so what happens with our FDs though, right? So our FDs now have gone down in value on a paired board. So what do our FFDs do here? So, yes, our flush draws are still betting. Well, this is interesting. Well, that, these are all pairs, so we're, we're gonna ignore these. So we're gonna take out flush draw nuts. And we are betting a lot in this region, which benefits generating folds.
Right. And none of the kings.
Yeah, but that's not all flush draws.
And none of the, uh, yes, it is. It's a flush draw filter.
Okay, sorry.
And
Over it and I thought I saw all the hands.
Yeah.
And so, and then we are, yeah, and the kings aren't because the kings have showdown on a scary paired board. I guess, yeah, the takeaway is beware of paired board.
Right.
Um, yeah. Clear.
Right, so Go check, check with ten, which is right. Everybody put it right so far.
Track.
What, what, cause like, let's, let's be honest, um, button can still have aces here, right?
Button is uncapped, yeah.
Yeah, but he doesn't.
Yeah.
Button is uncapped. He's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna check his well, let's just look at frequencies if you really wanna know. So
He's betting, he's betting.
Here, so on this node, how often do we have, how often do we have, um, uh, full house?
Ace, six.
How often we play a full house this way? Hands. Uh. We only have it one percent of the time because of the way we played this hand, right?
Yeah, okay.
So we can have it, but not really. Right, one in a hundred times we're gonna have it. Um, okay, so check, check, and then the river was a
Three.
Three, which is interesting.
A dramatic three of spades.
And what does his? What does he do with his ten? So he's obviously gonna bet, if we look, is he at, he's always gonna have bluffs, but he's got plus, but
Doesn't bet his ten.
What does he do with his ten?
Are you on the right note? Are you on the, still on the button?
I am not.
I'm guessing they go for thin value with the ten because
Trying to watch soccer, yeah. Um, okay, so in the, uh,
Our queen ten and jack ten are better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's
Alright, so it's a full house, obviously. It's hard, it's just, um, the tens, the tens are betting, but
He isn't betting king ten.
But the interesting thing is that, um, he is, it's very linear depending on his full house.
And remembering, and remember, your kicker doesn't matter, so it's only blocker properties that are going in there. So there's something about
Probably the kings bet on the, on the, the button bet is kings sometimes.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go to breakdown. Let's go look at what, at the full house. Yeah, so he, these are all his full houses, very linear in our betting pattern, right? Best full houses, we're trapping at a really high frequency with our best hand. So that, so we're trapping with the very best full houses, which I have like ninety-four, ninety-four percent equity, right?
Yeah.
But then we get down to our second tier, second class, you would say almost, and we're gonna bet out almost, we're gonna bet out a blocker sizing.
Yeah, one third.
And then our worst full houses, because everything's a full house, obviously, every pair's a glass, as we're just checking. Okay, cool, interesting. Um, so what are you doing, Gabe?
Well, he bet and the size he bet was two point five, he bet half pot.
He had jack ten, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, jack ten. And what size, I'm sorry, what size did he use?
He bet two point five.
So he found the right sizing for this. He found a blocker sizing.
Mm-hmm.
Which is correct because button has, never has aces, right? Almost never, like one percent, right? You guys said.
Never has aces and
Yeah.
It's correct because solve it does.
And what do we call with? Uh, we call with all our tens. So we call
Kings, queens, jacks.
All our full houses are, only the, we are now mixing, so our under pairs mix, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But all the tens are calling.
Tens and betters are calling hundred percent.
And all the aces.
Yep.
The aces mix. Maybe the aces mix because uh, it's hard to get called by worse.
Mm-hmm.
Is that why?
And yeah, there's some, there exists a three.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I guess, yeah, there exists a three.
There exists, um, although I don't, there are just very few pocket tens.
Yeah, you're right. Three, uh, three quads. How much are quads in his range? It's infinitesimal, but how much is it? Just you gotta hear us.